Evening with. Recording progress. We started with some interviews when we took a pause because we were having probably tell us some technical issues. We're going to resume the regular council meeting, which would have started at seven, but we're going to start here at seven thirteen. Says so.
The chairman and members of the council, the first item of this business is agenda.
Counselor. Second, which made by Tony seconded by Tim to approve any discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
The next item on the agenda is the submission of minutes and attempt council meeting by May fifth, twenty twenty one.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Mary, approve any discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is C one, this is ordinance twenty twenty one dash six, this is fees and charges to the components of schedule of fees for the building permit fees, this is the second reading for adoption.
So we have the building official on, I spoke with the administrator a bit earlier today, and we have him here for any questions. And it's my understanding, Mr. Administrator, if you could give me clarity, or certainly Stephen Greenlee or building official. It sounds as though these changes are obviously to keep us. We were we were out of state's numbers, and I mean that in the sense of that we would on a yearly basis ask for coming with the term is so we're not following along with state dollars. This will coincide with most of the other changes are pretty minimal, some are actually there's lesser costs, some are higher. It sounds like it was a pretty, it was a small change, but it was also to be consistent with the numbers across the state. Do I have that in a nutshell? That's it. Was there questions for our building official? It was this council.
Make a motion to the second reading.
Second, motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to adopt any discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The chairman and members of the council, the next item on the business is ordinance twenty twenty one dash seven, this is to check to thirteen in the health and sanitation, and this is to increase the number of tent two licenses from two to four, two of which shall be reserved specifically for the application of permanent makeup. This is the first reading.
Second, motion made by Mary, seconded by Tony constitute first reading and discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is item C three, and this is ordinance twenty twenty one dash eight, this is the path to sixteen, the residential parking, and this is to add Noise Avenue to the residential parking zone in the designated residential parking district, and this is first reading, first motion.
Second, motion made by Mary, seconded by Tony constitute first reading and discussion. Mr. Chairman, obviously, this is first reading, so. Yes, okay, we'll do. Anything else? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any vote? Any votes? Before we move forward, Councilman Layden reached out and asked to move an agenda item forward. And to ask this council if you're okay with moving K one, K one. It's a special report from Executive Director and Chief Engineer for the Bristol County Water Authority to give us, and as importantly, public an update. Yes, excellent. Motion made by our seconded by Tony, move K one forward, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. So Chris, are we, in the way that we are right now, are we able to hear from Stephen? I just did all of that, I probably should have asked you that first, but I apologize. Technical issues.
Yep, we can, so I can unmute them and you'll you'll transmit from here.
Excellent, so if you could do that.
And what's last name of the gentleman?
Uh, Kudo, C O U T. First name Stephen.
Should be on, just ask to unmute.
Stephen, if you could unmute.
I have. Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, we can hear you. Chris is, excellent. So Stephen, just take a moment here, we're having some technical challenges, but we'll get through it. If you could please state your name and address for the record, it's our understanding you're here with us this evening to give us an update on some planned projects.
That's correct, my name is Stephen Cutu, I am the Executive Director and Chief Engineer for the Bristol County Water Authority, located at four fifty Child Street, Warren, Rhode Island.
So we we did hear you, so we're going to be very quiet so we can hear you, go ahead.
Thank you, I guess I can, I can hear you. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. First off, to introduce myself, yeah, my name is Stephen Cutu, I'm new Executive Director and Chief Engineer for Bristol County Water. Also, I believe on the line here tonight is Bristol Board Member Bob Martin, and he, along with two other board members from the town of Bristol, Gina McDonald and Juan Mariscal, felt it was a, you know, really important and a good idea for me to introduce myself and to talk a little bit about the projects that we have planned in the town of Bristol for this upcoming construction season. Particularly since, other than our, the Tuckett Pipeline Phase One project, which is currently ongoing in East Providence, the projects that we have in Bristol this construction season are our, some of our larger infrastructure projects that we have planned. Of, and just for one, as some of you may know, I come from East Providence where I work for twenty-three plus years, and I was the director there for twenty, Director of Public Works there for twenty years. Worked many years with the Police Chief turned Bristol DPW Director, Chris Porella. So, looking at some of the projects that we have going on, and I value that it's already been completed. In the short period of time that I have been here, we started and completed the cleaning and lining of an old cast iron main on Sixth Avenue. I would buy there today, and the contract, not remaining pieces of their temporary bypass. All told, that project was three hundred fifty thousand dollars, and we were able to, you know, three hundred then your eight of old cast iron main and install four new hydrants. We will be installing final pavement, the trenches sometime to settle sometime in the fall. Most importantly, though, as many of you are probably aware, historically Bristol has had, in some areas, poor pressure in areas of town. And for many years Bristol County Water has been planning for and budgeting for corrections to this issue. And hence, we have for this construction season, what we're calling projects that will expand by service area. Now, when I say the high service area, we have two pressure zones in Bristol. Think of the area of Medicom Avenue, kind of like the High Ridge, and that area is served off the, the higher tank that you see off of Medicom Avenue. And then the rest of the system is pressurized through the tank, brown level tank adjacent to that tank. So in order to improve the pressure within the locations, we have a number of contracts proposed. The first contract is going to be a new pump station adjacent to our Hope Street water storage tank. This project is in final design and permitting, we anticipate a bid date in early summer with construction to start in late summer, early fall. This construction cost is estimated at two million dollars, and this project will allow us to pump water from that Hope Street tank into the expanded high service zone. We're also working closely with Bristol Public Safety officials on this project to install new antenna on top of tank and equip and equipment within the new pump station for their improved radio communications. Our our second big project is a project that's already been a bid and awarded, and in order for us to expand this so-called high service area, we need to install some dedicated transmission pipelines within Medicom Avenue itself. This project, which was a member construction at a cost of one point five million dollars, will entail installation of three thousand four hundred feet of new twelve inch paint in Medicom Avenue within two sections, from Robin Drive to Gooding Avenue, and from Tupelo Street to Adamah Drive. We will also be installing new two inch main on some local streets, Madam and Susan Streets as well. The start date for this project on this, on the town streets is going to be after the Fourth of July holiday weekend. And the work on Medicom Avenue, which as you all know is a state roadway, is scheduled until August. This work will continue through the construction season until the fall. And then our third project that as part of this expansion is a smaller project, and is going to include installation of new eight inch main, three hundred feet, and it will connect two dead end lines from Wilcox Lane to Smith Street, and the elimination of the dead mains will improve water quality and flow. That project has also been awarded to JML excavation at a cost of two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and that project is anticipated to start in mid-June. And as we get closer to these projects, we will notify all of council customers in that area in anticipation of the construction. So those are the big projects that we wanted to make you aware of. And if you have any, any questions, are you?
So Stephen, this is Nathan Coro, I, I think, well, I know, the audio having nothing to do with you is, is, is quite difficult for us to hear. We did get the overview field, which I think the highest impact in the sense of traffic may be Medicom Avenue, speaking to Director Bob Martin recently. He had mentioned, and Councilman Aaron Lay wanted this moved forward, and I, we all concur, we could bring that to people's attention, and if I recall from what you said correctly, that project on Medicom starts in August, was that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
They have a very strict timeframes for DOT on this project. DOT is giving them a very short window, if they're going to work during the day, like hours, from nine, nine AM to two PM.
Okay, I'm going to open up to my colleagues, counsel.
Steve, this is Tony Dixara, a voice from the past. Well, welcome to the area, we certainly appreciate your efforts, and certainly it's great news to hear about the pressure issues that's being addressed, because that's one of the things that I've heard quite often, is the, you know, the poor pressure that we've had in certain areas. But it certainly seems like you, you know, you were addressing that, and that's great news, so thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
Anything else in the council?
I just wanted to say, this is Aaron Lay, Steve, I just wanted to say thank you for coming here, we look forward to working with you, and I look forward to participating, you know, with everything BCWA.
Thank you, Councilman, and thank you for moving me up in the agenda, and if it helps, I could gather, I know the audio was a little rough and some bullets, I could pass that on to the town administrator, which you could forward to you, just so you have a better idea as to what I was just speaking about. And as always, if you have any questions, feel free to give me a call.
Yes, please, the, if you could forward that on to the administrator, that'll also help with making sure that we had all the notes correct this evening. Anything else in the council? So we just need a motion to receive and file.
So moved.
Second, motion made by Tim to receive and file, seconded by Tony, may I also suggest that at the completion of all these projects, Stephen, maybe you could come back in front of us and tell you, tell us about the success, and as Tony mentioned, San Francisco in particular has been a road that has been sorely underserved, sorely underserved by for water pressure, so looking forward to those improvements. So we had a motion and a second to receive and file, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, thank you, Stephen.
Thank you very much.
The chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is D one, and we have Natalie Benavides doing business as Green Eggs, request for a bidding license.
Based on the positive recommendations, make a motion to approve the bidding license for Green Eggs.
Second, motion made by Tim to approve license, seconded by Tony, I'll take a moment here to say on behalf of this council to Natalie, normally this would be your thirty second commercial, but i- if you're on right now, we'll give you a really bad audio, but we'll give you a moment to tell everybody about the transition. She on?
Okay.
Natalie, if you could state your full name and address for the record, and take a moment to tell everybody what you're doing, please.
Okay, can you give me know?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so. Thank you for. And give and do that, this no petition, my name is Natalie Benavides, and my husband's name is Junior Herrera. We just, and address is four seventy six Medicon Avenue, and it, we are the new owner of Green Eggs and him. We just moved here like eight months ago and work on the place, and we just love it, and we just voted like one month ago, and we just like to keep, you know, as great, as great as the last owner, and keep doing, you know, a great breakfast as they did before. And we just love the opportunity to give other people the opportunity to have an employee, and we just love the town.
Natalie, it sounds like you've got great plans, I know we've all probably, Green Eggs and him at some point, who's always excellent, and I'm assuming that we'll continue with that great tradition, so congratulations, I think, because we have a motion to approve, but I'll ask for a vote here for a second. A motion and a second to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent, Natalie, good luck with your new business.
Thank you very much, I really appreciate this.
The chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is E one, and this is the sidewalk use license renewals for twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two to twenty twenty two.
Based on all positive recommendations, make a motion to approve the sidewalk use renewals for twenty one, twenty two.
I'll second that, however, do we have?
I was just going to ask that question, thank you.
Okay, I was going to ask a question regarding the thirty one State Street. Do we have an update on that?
So. So today's, so we are on E one, which is sidewalk use license for noodles, there was a recommendation from Chris Vitale, Economic Development, or Director, to approve all except one because of an issue that had existed and may still can continue to exist, Chris, could you inform the council on what status is on that, please?
Certainly, so after I submitted my letter, we were able to correspond with statesmen, and they have since removed the tent, so we were able to work with them on that for their temporary outdoor seating space.
Could you just back up for a second, I know the council's aware of it, but if you just inform the public of what you mentioned, the tent, we know what it is, but if you could just share it further.
Absolutely, so this past year, as part of our initiative through COVID, we allowed businesses to expand into public areas for temporary outdoor seating here last fall and last winter. Because obviously, the colder months, we allowed them to put up temporary tents in those spaces. Now, with it being the spring, with it being nicer out, and in an effort to try and clean up the downtown ahead of our busy season, we had asked as part of the renewal that the businesses take down those tents, and they have.
Excellent, and there was one pending, but that is since.
That is correct.
Mr. Administrator?
There was another matter, the liquor license is not in good standing right now, for the statesman.
And I believe, and I would ask Mr. Solicitor, if you could just take a moment and just kind of inform this council on next steps, it would be, we also, our next agenda item is alcohol license, we'll get there at home.
So they haven't been in compliance with your rules and regulations regarding liquor licenses for some time now. There have been multiple letters sent requesting that they come into compliance, that has not yet happened as of this date, so my advice to the council, we at the next meeting, we will place an agenda item with regard to setting a show cause hearing for revocation of classes.
Okay.
So can you move, move forward with the review? We can't, well, I would, well, their liquor license is not up to be renewed this evening, so. The only, what is up to renewal is the expanded service area, and what I would do is I would deny, since they no longer are going to have the ability to serve outside, I would deny that, and then we would have the hearing on whether or not they're going to keep their liquor license in general for the all of the classes.
So Mike, would you help us, the, what's in front of us at the moment is sidewalk use renewals, so what would be the motion appropriate for what you just said?
With regard to statesman tavern, I would deny the request for the sidewalk license renewal, and I would prepare for you the appropriate agenda item next council meeting with regard to the indoor liquor license.
And that will be motion one on that, and we'll have a second motion to approve, is that correct?
That would be correct.
Nice.
So moved.
Tim had made a motion. All right, so Tim is making motions, there are seconds, and Tony has seconded, discussion.
My, my question is about the fees. I thought that at some point we were maybe, maybe we were not go, we were going to not charge the fees for this summer because of, you know, businesses are just trying to get back in business, I mean, they've been closed, it had a lot of hardships, and a lot of these restaurants still do have hardships in terms of staffing and so forth. Um, so I thought there was some discussion, I thought there was something in the last agenda item that was a little premature when that came up.
So that was the twenty twenty one fees that were waived, the twenty twenty fees were waived, not the twenty twenty one.
No, I know.
So we did one round of fee waivers as part of the emergency order, but I think this, this, I don't think this is a fee issue with that business, I think it's another issue.
Well, I'm not talking about statesmen, I'm talking about in general, just as, it's not like tons of money to the town, just as like a good gesture towards the businesses that are trying to get back on their feet, and that's why I'm reading, I'm not reading this anything to do with just one establishment or company in general.
Well, so.
Have we talked about that?
I'm, I'm, I'm not going to propose that in the, as part of an emergency order, we're ramping down the emergency orders, but if the council would like to do that, in certain way fees, but and this part of, part of the fee application is the court ensures that there's a proper state licensing that goes along with it. So the fees, I'm not sure what they have, seventy five dollars for sidewalk use, is a hundred dollars, but along with that, we make sure that they drop off the certificate of liability and some other things that the building license, there's, you know, the food handlers is required with that, so it's a process that's important, you can certainly waive the fee, but I will say, in general statewide, we did waive fees last year, if you want to do it again. But I will say most of them did pay, I think this is the only court would be able to.
Oh, they've already, they've already paid.
They've already paid. Yeah, that, that's why I, you know, I hear what you're saying, because however, it is only two out of the others, the others did not have an issue with paying their fee, so I wouldn't be against waiving the fee, you know, for these pending two businesses.
And it's also important to note that this will go through twenty twenty two, so this, these licenses expire at the end of this month, a few days, so it'll be well past hoping that that all goes back to normal past this difficult time.
Yeah, but except for the fact of the matter is that May thirty first to down to twenty two is, may, I mean, it's maybe, maybe something outside of April, May, you know what I mean, it's like mostly this summer and fall that this is impacts. But if they've already paid, I guess it's sort of like a somewhat of a moot issue.
Is there any other discussion? So we're going to go, I'm going to, just because we talked about a few things, the, the motion and seconded by Tony was to deny, a motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony was to deny a statesman renewal for the sidewalk use license, and to, Mike, help me with that, to have on the next agenda a show cause hearing, is that correct?
No, I know there's a show.
Notice, thank you, all right, any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, and the second motion will be for the renewal excluding the statesman.
So again, I'll make a motion to approve the sidewalk alcohol renewals for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, but in this motion, I will exclude the statesman tavern to have a noted show of cause hearing on the next council meeting.
Counselor Sweeney, we won't actually be having the show cause hearing at the next meeting, it'll just be the notice of the show cause hearing, I don't even, I don't even think that needs to be in that motion, but I think what you should add to your motion about the renewal is for renewal for all of those who are in compliance with the ordinance, because I understand there's a second establishment that has not yet paid, and I don't think you should issue them a license, so they, like all the others, have paid their fee. So moved.
Second, there's a motion and a second to renew excluding those that are not compliant, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is E two, and this is the sidewalk alcohol use license renewals for twenty twenty two.
Mike, is this a similar?
Yeah, I would exclude statesman tavern.
So renewal, so the motion would be to renew all in compliance excluding statesman stuff.
So moved.
Second, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is Christian F one, and this is Mitch in Judith Gills of twenty five Noise Avenue, this is a request to remove four feet of parking space across twenty five Noise Avenue.
I understand that we have a recommendation, I know that we have one in our packet, we also have one from the chief, is that correct?
The chief is making his recommendation on time, but he is on the call, and you can move over, but I know we concur with Director Porella and myself to agree.
So Chief Lynch, I know that you're on the call, as the administrator just said that you concur with the recommendation, was there anything you needed to add?
No, I concur with the DPW Director.
Thank you, chief. What's this council's buddy?
Well, I, I, I have a question, I, I can do it now or I can do it afterwards, I thought that we asked at the last meeting that the the, all these no parking and changes, we looked at comprehensively, and I thought they were going to come back at the end of the, like, maybe the next month with a plan, because if you recall, there was the two parts to the, to this issue. One was the fact that Noise Avenue had that left off of the, you know, probably inadvertently left off of the resident parking, but then there was the issue of, I think, seven or nine already, no parking boxes and changes to parking areas there, and I thought that that was being looked at, so where does that stand, that project?
So I took this as separate from, from those, this was a request from this specific resident, on that, I didn't take that as part of, of that discussion.
Well, because it wasn't any on the agenda at the time, but I did reference that there was nothing coming up in relation to that.
Absolutely, I do, I do remember that.
Yeah, so, and this was the issue.
So I believe Chief Lynch had assigned an officer in that was the last council meeting, on May fifth, was it, so I'm sure it's on its way, he's on the call, he may, may want to ask him.
I'm not sure if the chief can respond without Chris being there, chief, are you on? He can.
Yes, I am, yes, the, the comprehensive look that council person Porella is talking about is under, is underway. It is extremely extensive, we're finding several issues that require research, we're working with the solicitor to draft an ordinance for that residential parking. We've been out there measuring the roadway, studying the roadway, looking at previous ordinances, looking at signs that had been inappropriately affixed in that location. Residents, parking in curb cuts that have been changed, that now have grass, it is just not an easy recommendation. It is just not an easy recommendation to put together, so we're taking our due diligence and researching with other town departments and the solicitor to have something that's comprehensive and accurate for the council. And like yourself, we also took this as an ancillary issue, because it was a, 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 a separate request.
Well, Chief, to Mary's point, does, is there value here in holding off and continuing this agenda item until your comprehensive research is completed?
No, I don't think that that's necessary. I think that the recommendation has merit on its own.
Chief, Tony. Chief, a question. Right now, we one-way going south. Am I correct?
Yeah.
Yes. Yes. Alright, with that being said, they also currently parking left side of the curb. Did I see that correct? I mean, I just drove by there very quickly. I had meant to walk the place, but I didn't have a chance to. Because if we go on, if your left eye is the curb at the present time, should we consider switching that one way to go in the other direction, go on south to north?
It may be, it may be a recommendation, because we do have a renter, I spoke to the homeowner, he's emailed us, Mr. Pacheco, relative to a person getting a citation for parking on the curb. You'll note that the width of the road, as you drove down it, is extremely, extremely narrow. So when a resident does kind of huddle up onto the sidewalk, you know, again, we're gonna have to look at it with the solicitor. They're actually doing us, you know, some due diligence if we had to get a rescue fire truck or, or DPW vehicles by the roadway. It's just, it's just a huge challenge. There's some parking blocks that I think, I, I don't want to prejudge the outcome. I've been down myself after the last council meeting. I, I went down and personally walked the roadway. That will be making recommendations to remove some. There's some signage down there that is not supported by ordinance. The width of the roadway makes whatever we do extremely challenging. So, and again, it's one of those streets, it's, did not get picked up on the residential list. So there's a lot of challenges, and we just need some more time to get it right.
Could I just ask, Chief, how you see this as a separate issue, completely separate issue, from that issue? How you see this utility pool issue being different from that whole comprehensive plan?
Well, one was, request was made by one resident, and this was made, you know, by an additional resident. We've, we've gone down, and, you know, it is a challenge due to the width of that roadway for this other homeowner to back out of their driveway. They already have permission for a parking block. They need a little bit more room to accurate, accurately navigate that particular turn. We can wait. Again, I think my overall recommendation would be that this particular homeowner needs a little bit more distance to accurately, you know, back out of their driveway and to pull in. There's just so many challenges, Councilwoman, on, on that road. And due to the narrow roadway, it makes it very hard to back your vehicle out. And, and I, none of us are gonna ever be able to change that. We're just gonna have to find the best solution for the, the quandary at hand.
Well, can I just ask one other question? The way the photo is looking at this, and I'm very familiar with this road. It seems to me that that particular parking lot, that particular driveway just right, they back up almost, if they slightly angled their car, they would back up right into the, the no, there's a giant no parking space because there are four garages there. And I don't understand why you need another box over there when they could slightly angle their car, they're just like, got this whole big wide area.
Are you there, Chief?
I'm, I'm here. You know, if you'd like us to, to, to provide some different visual aids and, and measurements to do that, the DPW director, I concur with, with his recommendation. And, you know, we didn't see the need to go out and to do putting extensive vehicles in the roadway, because there's already permission for the parking block. I believe the request is, is just to extend it so that they can safely navigate that turn. I can tell you that if I lived on that roadway, I certainly too would have difficulty backing out of my driveway, no matter what we do.
Oh, absolutely. In terms of students down there, way too many cars for all of the, for the limited parking on there, so question about it.
So I'd like to ask a question, maybe, are we, is anyone, Chief, or Chris Perella or DPW director, are we aware of any kind of pending, if we were to put this off and we waited as part of a holistic decision on this? Is this resident waiting for us to give this approval to do some things, or pending work to be done, or if we were to hold off till that complete study was done? Is there any reason why we shouldn't wait? I guess is my question. Then anyone's aware? Okay, hearing none. I would suggest that there's, there's no harm, I have no objection to granting this, but I also have no objection to having this as part of the complete process. So colleagues' thoughts? If you agree, maybe we can have a motion to continue till that, that study's complete.
Sure, I would like to make that motion, because this was specifically, this issue was specifically, I know that she keeps saying that it was already approved, I don't recall if it was or not, but I mean, the this issue was specifically one that when I came down to the clerk to bring my other request at the last meeting, I heard about this one, and, and so I specifically referenced this. I mean, I think this needs to be part of the whole look.
Okay. Is there a second? Oh, a second. So there's a motion to continue to the meeting, so for the completion of the study that the chief mentioned, seconded by Tony. Discussion?
Do we have to reset because didn't we have a motion?
Did we have, I didn't, I did not hear the motion, I'm sorry. No, Mary has a question right at the beginning of the conversation, I believe we ever had a motion.
Sure, I'm good.
Okay, any other discussion?
Yeah, just missing chairman, just a question about the I, I know on some, we had to go through the ordinance process to extend or remove parking spaces and things like that. Why is this one there? Because it's a different part of the
Right. You would send it
Can you pass my phone?
If, if you were to have backed it on this this evening, the motion would have been to send it to me, and I would have drafted it on yourself.
So it would still happen that way?
Right, so it, it sounds as if though you're going to wait for the holistic recommendation from the police chief who will, will act on it. And, and then what we'll do is we'll do one ordinance change that encompasses everything that needs to be done.
I think that makes more sense. I mean, it would be kind of weird to have a brand new one when you're taking some away from people that may have had, potentially taken something from people they may have had for years.
Okay. So there was a motion and a second? Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, the next item on the agenda is F2, and this is Greg Marsili, the harbor master, requesting a harbor festival, to hold the harbor, annual Bristol Harbor Festival on August 14th, 2021.
Based on positive recommendations, make a motion to approve the annual Bristol Harbor Festival on August 14th.
Second. Glad to see this back.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Mary, both very happy. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is F3, and this is Michelle Martin from the Fourth of July Committee, requesting the Bristol Maritime Center for the Flag Day Reception on June 14th.
Based on all recommendations, I am moved that we approve it.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to approve the Flag Day Reception for the Fourth of July Committee on June 14th. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, the next item on the agenda is G1, and this is public service appointments. And this is the Harvard Commission Advisory Committee, and we have a letter for a designation provided by Patrick McFarthing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion first to approve with regret, and with a letter, thank you for your service.
May I also suggest that that motion include, we had other applicants, maybe on our next meeting, we can we had other applicants that were interested in bidding that we're interested in moving forward with our calls, correct? Maybe we can get that on the next agenda for filling this position. I agree with that motion, is that okay?
I'm good with that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is H1, and this is old businesses for Veronica McFarland of Seventeenth Wolf Avenue. And this was originally for a crespeno parking, and this is continued from March 24th, 2021.
So this, we have recommendations from the police department and DPW and administrator and, I believe, R2, to, to deny Mr. Administrator, or actually, I know the chief is on it too. Could you just give us a quick synopsis, Chief? If, if you could give us just a quick synopsis of why you're recommending a denial, I know we have it here, but like it for the public, please, sir. We can't hear you. I know you brought me on mute.
Can you refresh me on what petition that was? I apologize, I had a call from the police station.
Absolutely, no problem. It was H1, which is Veronica McFarland, Seventeenth Wolf, request for no parking on the Wolf Ave. And there was a recommendation from all to deny, looks like you did a lot of research on this one with traffic studies, speeds, accidents, such and so forth. And it looks like the justification is clearly there to say that it didn't seem necessary.
Yes, that's another one that the department took an aggressive look at. We contacted Joe Tera at the DPW, we spoke to First Student, as you remember. The resident at that location had stated that school buses were having a difficult time navigating around. That's one where the road is extremely wide, and we certainly thought that there were plenty of room to navigate the intersection. We also followed up with the fire marshal to see if there were any calls or concerns from the fire department with trucks that couldn't make the turn. Everywhere that we turned, we did not see any supporting documentation. Petitioner had justified the request. We, I wanted to go a little bit further in detail, and I sent out the parking trailer, which looked at some average speeds in that area. Speed wasn't really raised as, as the overarching concern. But on a daily average, about 227 vehicles go by in the northbound traffic. Their average speed is 15.5 miles an hour, and that's a prima facie speed of 25 miles an hour. And in the southbound side, on a daily average, 379 vehicles go by, and the average speed was about 19.2. So we really, you know, dug down and wanted to, you know, do our due diligence for the resident, and unfortunately, I could not find anybody to support from busing to DPW to the fire department that there was a need for any, for any of those, for the petitioners' requests from, from the council.
Thank you, Chief, that was very clear. Plus, it's council's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, based on all the observations and traffic study of the area, I recommend that we connect the request. Second.
There's a motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to deny, is there any discussion?
Just like to say, this is a great comprehensive study, having all this information is very, very useful to us, thank you.
Yes, I, I agree. It was a great report, thank you, Chief.
Yes, thank you, Chief. Any other question? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I1, next council meeting. Requesting authorization to fly the Japanese national flag at Eastport, along with the Black Ship Festival on June 12th, 2021.
What's this council's vote?
Make a motion. Just gonna make a motion to approve.
Second. Discussion?
Are we having the Black Ship Festival here?
They haven't scaled on, but it should be should be well worth our time to visit. It's Independence Park on the 12th. Starts at 3:00 PM, a brief ceremony, but they can have some arts and crafts, and they go drum, you know, it's gonna be doing the performance, so it's Saturday, the 12th.
So it'd be like one day as opposed to like the weekend?
Yeah.
So it's more of a black ship festival?
But I think at least went back to like going to the, it's great.
I'm looking forward to, we keep saying Normal's coming back, and there's all these things keep coming. This was a great event a couple of years ago, and it's really nice to see it come back.
Yeah, they really just, you know, you've been following it, but they, they've really found a home here, and they're picking the connections with Commonwealth area, very awesome, very strong ties with that actual Black Ship voyage out to Japan. That was a peaceful mission, opened up trade with Japan, so Bristol has some strong connections with that, it's real positive.
Excellent. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I2, and we have town administration tenting, requesting authorization to fly the Portuguese national flag at Town Hall. Recognition of the Portugal on June 7th, 2021.
I make a motion, and then we approve it.
Second.
Motion made by Tony to approve, seconded by Tim. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is I3, and it's an update from the curator, Patrick Donovan from Varnum Armory, and his request for a contribution of a thousand dollars for Varnum Armory to assist with the restoration of historic flags.
Is Patrick Donovan on Zoom?
He is.
Excellent. If you could unmute Patrick. Patrick, if you could please state your full name
Hey, guys.
And address for the record. Can you hear us?
You bet. It's Patrick Donovan. Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Alright, great. So my name is Patrick Donovan. I'm the executive director of the Varnum Memorial Armory Museum in East Greenwich, located at Sixth Main Street.
Perfect. So Patrick, my understanding is you want to give us an update on your progress, and also clearly on here, as we had discussion approximately a year and a half ago about making a contribution towards the repair. So the floor is yours, sir, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Very generous to offer a donation to go towards the conservation. So we appeared before you, I think it was December of 2019, and we entered into this agreement where we would take possession of the flags that were stored at the Burnside Memorial Building. There turned out to be, in this bunch of flags that were wrapped in plastic, there were eight flags in total. And we evaluated those flags in the textile conservation lab that we have at the Varnum Armory. And we decided to conserve four of those eight flags. And I'm happy to report that three of those four flags have been fully conserved. And two of those flags are on display, and the third is about to go on display. And then we're gonna begin conservation on the fourth and final flag, probably later this summer, once we get through some other client projects that we have. Let me briefly give you just a quick overview of what those four flags were. So two of those flags were Civil War, post-Civil War veteran flags for the Babbitt Post Number 15, the Grand Army of the Republic organization that used to meet in the Burnside Memorial in the, in the 1880s, 1890s. So those two flags have been conserved. They're beautiful, very small flags. We have two of the same flag, incidentally, so we're, we would be happy to put one of those two flags back on display, ideally at the Bristol Town, Town Hall there, if you're interested.
Absolutely.
Great. And then the other two flags, these are very, very special, very historically significant flags. The first one I'll mention is a 33-star Civil War battle flag. We're building a case that it was hand-sewn by, quote, "the ladies of Bristol", and was presented to Company H of the Second Rhode Island Volunteers who originated out of Bristol. There's a newspaper article that shows with a picture showing the ladies of Bristol presenting the flag to the men just weeks before they marched off to war to fight in the first major battle in the American Civil War. There's evidence of potential battle damage, evidence of period repairs. possible blood stains on the flag. This flag is going to be a huge challenge for, uh, Maria Vasquez, our professional textile conservator. She's actually with me here. Uh, it's going to be a big challenge for her, but she's up to it. Uh, we're going to begin that project, uh, this summer. But the main thing that I wanted to talk to you about, and I also have a favor to ask, is um, the third flag that we finished the conservation work on is the ancient, uh, Nathaniel Byfield flag. Um, it's on its original flag pole with the original finny. We believe this flag dates to circa sixteen ninety. If so, this would make this flag the oldest colonial American flag in existence. It's a national treasure. Um, the, the history around it is very interesting. Nathaniel Byfield, of course, for those who may not know, he was one of the founders of the town of Bristol. He was a Colonel of the Bristol County Militia. And he purchased this flag, uh, for his company, Company A. It's a plain gold colored, uh, silk flag with beautiful tassels, beautiful fringe. It's in fairly good condition. I was actually planning on showing you slides, but I don't seem to have the ability to do that. Um, I would be happy to come back and do a slideshow presentation at some point.
Yes.
I would also invite, make the invitation for the town council, uh, to come visit the armory perhaps, and we can give you a firsthand, uh, look at the flags. You can see the lab, you can see the flags that are on display. This is a, uh, unbelievable find. Um, it's been used in Bristol's Fourth of July Parade going back centuries. We found old newspaper accounts in the eighteen hundreds where this thing was carried proudly at the head of the parade. Now, the favor that I'd like to ask, um, in- incidentally, I think I mentioned this last time, but we are filming a Rhode Island PBS documentary about the flag, its history, its significance in Bristol, its significance to, you know, the founding of our country. Um, it's going to be an hour long documentary. Uh, it will be both the history of the flag as well as the discovery and, uh, the conservation of the flag. Um, we're hoping to finish this and have it, uh, potentially come out this fall. We were kind of slowed down, obviously because of COVID. Um, but the big thing that's just recently happened is we had the head of the, uh, National U S Army Museum in Washington, D C that just opened up about a year ago. It's a spare no expenses type of museum. It looks like a Google data center on the outside. They spent hundreds of millions of dollars building this beautiful place. And the head of that museum, uh, flew out and spent two days with us at the Barnum Armory. And they want to be part of the documentary. They wanted to display the flag for a maximum of two years, starting in twenty twenty five. And basically have it, uh, for the beginning of the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of our country. For them, this flag represents literally the beginnings of the American military. It represents, they love the angle to the fact that it was displayed in America's very first Fourth of July parades. They, uh, we're gonna, we might have a potentially a visit from the chairman of the Joint Chiefs of Staff this summer, uh, who apparently is a flag guy. He loves history and we're going to hope to get him on camera. Um, the army is going to do a carbon date, uh, test. They're going to pay for that. So that's going to, uh, give us at least a rough idea that we are definitely in the right ballpark from the age perspective. And then, uh, there's also an apparent blood stain on this flag, blood splatter. We think the flag was used in King William's War, Queen Anne's War, uh, intra-colonial conflicts between French Canada, the, uh, uh, Massachusetts Bay Colony and various Indian tribes. And, uh, so they're going to test for blood and they're going to, if there is a positive blood result, they're going to attempt to extract DNA and do DNA testing. This is like fifteen thousand dollars worth of testing. But it could really enrich the story. You could tell us who it is, their sex, their age, their, their hair color, their eye color, their race, their shape of their face. It'll give us a lot of data about who might have been involved with this flag, which would make the story that much more interesting. Um, and then the other amazing thing that they're going to do for us is that they're going, the flag's been conserved, but they're going to remount the flag in a display case that's going to cost, they said about thirty thousand dollars. And we'll get to keep that display case, uh, for the future. So I think it's a fantastic opportunity. So I guess my, my formal ask to you guys would be, uh, to allow us to loan this to the U S Army for display for a maximum of two years pending your town administrator's review of the loan contract. Obviously we want to make sure that you're comfortable with the terms. I have talked to the army. They're, they're more than happy to, to say that this is the property of the town of Bristol. You would be part of the signage. And Maria and I are actually going to be co-curators of the exhibit. So we'll have a say ultimately in what the signage says and what the wording is and things like that.
Easy. It is like so exciting.
Yeah, we're just in awe here and this is just tremendous information. Uh, it's exciting. It's, it's overwhelming. It's amazing.
It is. It was, uh, we were completely stunned today. We actually unrolled, so these flags were rolled up around the original poles. And we humidified them for weeks before we unrolled them and we did it on camera with PBS. It was a very, uh, scary situation doing this, you know, worried we're going to break something. And, uh, w- we were just stunned at what we were looking at and we had, uh, on hand with us, we had the Director of the Naval War College Museum with us and we also had a material culture expert from Gettysburg National Military Park, uh, who, you know, who basically said, yeah, we're looking at a seventeenth century flag here, which blew everybody's minds.
I must tell you a couple of points. One is, is, it is just the tremendous work that you're doing is, is, it's, it's, we're in awe. Number one. Number two is I look at, um, the, uh, the previous clerk, Lou Sharillo. It was upstairs and I recall a conversation with, uh, Administrator Contenty and it went something along the lines of why are we going to give up a town flag? Why would we give that up? And the conversation went along and said that it's rotting away up there. We, it's, it's just, it's going to fall to pieces. Why not give it to someone who can bring it back to life? And without that conversation and then the, the council saying, yeah, we see the value of that. Obviously you did the hard work. Let me be really clear there. But it's just to, to, to give up that or, or to let it go to be, uh, restored, we never would have known or you never would have found out and shared with us its significance. It's just tremendous. So.
That's right. And every time, every time we share this story, we always give the town of Bristol a lot of kudos, a lot of credit for letting this thing out of the town and, you know, for the right thing to be done. You know, I always tell people that, you know, the town council voted unanimously and I just, you know, you guys should be proud of that.
Well, I look forward maybe to after we allow, um, shoot, I, I'm going to vote for it, to go to the Army Museum. Maybe you could be part of one of our flag days. Uh, my, my goodness, what a wonderful thing to have here. Um, and celebrate it here in a future date. So, or any of those significant flags, because in my head they're all significant. So one is truly significant.
It's just amazing. Oops, sorry. It's just amazing to learn the amount of history we had standing upstairs and of all those years. And unfortunately it was exposed to the sun, so it really did sort of beat up over the years. But, uh, I'm glad to hear that we're able to salvage four of those. And obviously, you know, just, it's just amazing to learn the history behind those flags.
I mean, I'm just like so happy to hear that and it's so exciting and, and, and amazing. And the technology that you all have to be able to do, you know, to, to be able to do these carbon prints or testing and figure out, like, you know, the DNA and all of that, that technology that's out there to tell, to tell more of the story, I think that is phenomenal. Um, I just want to go back one quick second to your, uh, invitation. Is that the council as a whole, or if any of us happen to be in the neighborhood, are you there mostly every day?
Stop by anytime.
Yeah, I mean. Uh, the town administrator has my contact information and yes, anytime you, you think, you know, even if it's just one of you, um, more than happy to give a tour, show you around. So definitely encourage that.
Excellent. Great. Thank you. And, and I just wanted to say, I just think it's a fascinating story and, uh, bringing Nathaniel Byfield back, uh, all the people that are involved with that flag back to life in a way to the story and how fitting it comes from the most patriotic town. I mean, it's really great. I think when we all did this, I don't think we knew what we actually had, um, in flags. And, uh, this is just a awesome and fascinating story. I can't wait to see the documentary.
It, it almost makes you wonder what's actually out there in some people's houses and in some of our buildings. And, uh, Patrick, if you can just tell Maria over there, you know, thank you for all of her hard work. Uh, I know that she, she's been working hard on this as well. So, thank you.
So would that be instead?
Uh, hundreds of hours. Yes.
I, I make a motion there we appropriate a hundred dollars to so, I mean, a thousand dollars to support the class and also allow the flag to be, uh, displayed at the, uh, right, is this all?
Yeah, I was, yeah, it sounded those that, that the, and maybe the administrator to review the document. So it's it's, it's working on behalf to, to review the document. Okay, so mo- motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary to appropriate a thousand dollars from council contingency, um, to the Barnum Armory and also to allow the administrator to act on behalf of the town, um, to look at that, uh, lease to go to the Army Museum. I think I caught that well. Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Patrick, good luck and we look forward to the next step here.
Awesome. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Bye.
The next item on the agenda is I four, and this is the borrowing resolution series twenty twenty one A funds.
Julie Gosher, our town treasurer. Julie.
So you may remember a few months back, we did a, uh, reimbursement resolution for this bond. So we discussed the projects a little bit at that time. And that was to allow us to spend money in advance of the actual borrowing. So now we're at the stage of getting ready to borrow the funds. I have a call with our reading agencies scheduled for next week. And what you have before you is the resolution to borrow a total of eight million, one hundred twenty-three thousand dollars, which was included in the budget and we discussed at the, at the budget time, too, if you remember. Um, this includes one million dollars for roads and sidewalks. It includes one uh, million, five hundred twenty thousand dollars for equipment primarily at DPW and Fire Department. It includes eight hundred thousand dollars of open space bonds. We spent a whole lot more than that on open space, but much of that was, uh, grant funds. So that's great. Uh, we have drainage funds of two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, the Marina Bond of three point five million, public building bonds of one million and seventy-five thousand. So let me just ask for a motion to adopt the resolutions bond.
Make a motion to adopt.
Second, motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to adopt the resolutions. Are there any discussion?
Uh, just a quick question, uh, Julie. Um, is, are these funds going directly to the projects? Or are we, are we reimbursing ourselves for many of this? Because then we approved, uh, for reimbursement that we were going to use some funds in advance of reimbursement.
Yep. So that allowed us to, um, order some of these, uh, trucks. As you remember, they take a long time. So once you order them, they take months and months to receive and we needed to get going on, on some of that and some of that's the hauling equipment so that we can have everything in order for July first. So we have been spending those funds in advance of receiving these bonds. So as soon as the bonds are issued, then we'll pay ourselves back. And then we can also get going on all of our other projects.
Super. Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Julie.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, the next item on the agenda is the Director of Community Development, Diane Williamson, in regards to a subrecipient agreement of credence I would spare and down. I think I skipped one.
Yep.
I did. Okay. Sorry. Uh, it's I five, Town Administrator Intenting, this is regards to town projects eligible for the American Rescue Plan funding.
Mr. Administrator?
So I have a, uh, I have a list that we provided in your packet. And so when we learned that the town of Bristol was eligible for approximately four point six million dollars, uh, it's part of the American Rescue Plan, the ton heads, uh, we all got together. And we all, uh, compiled our project, project lists from each individual departments, from economic development to the sewer department, fire pump, this common engineering development, power, patrol, recreation, and it was then Diane Williamson's, uh, task to determine what projects would have been eligible. And she also strongly considered which ones were shovel ready, um, to get this done within the two-year allotment that were allowed. So we're, we're pleased to provide this list to you, uh, because we feel as if these will benefit the most residents of Bristol directly. As you'll see, most of them, uh, relate to stormwater management, um, and resiliency. And there's another interesting one here called broadband infrastructure that we'd like to bring into town to serve public buildings and also our many public areas. So one thing we learned during the pandemic is, um, in some cases there was not internet available, uh, for individuals. So we learned that, um, people were going in the library, trying to reach wifi hotspots and so forth. So our grand plan would be anywhere there's a public building or a public park, we would provide, uh, pre-public wifi. So again, um, these projects here are, most of them are shovel ready. We have the planning done and we're looking for projects that aren't going to require years of permitting. Um, so that's why we came up with the, um, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven, seven major projects.
Mr. Administrator, there was guidance. I, I recall a, a conversation that you and I had with, uh, Congressman Cicilline along with a subsequent one with Senator Reed. And it gave guidance talking about what was an eligible project. Could you just real quickly kind of cover that? So for example, it can't just be, uh, new TVs or a new police car. These things may be important, but that was not part of it. Could you just kind of overview that real quick?
Yeah, sure. So the main points that were made early on were broad, uh, broadband sewer and water. Uh, but then when you start looking into it, it was anything that, um, would would help, help a, a community weather a future pandemic. And then also global sea rise was also included in it. Um, so there is another project in here. It was, um, relating to public area like HVAC, uh, heating ventilation systems to make it safer to open. When this pandemic struck, many town halls were immediately closed. So this would, um, provide funding for heat heating and ventilation improvements, also for technology improvements to hold meetings, as you can see today. Um, the meetings, it is possible for the public. So if there is another pandemic, we can continue to meet government, keep running. But, uh, there was a hundred and ten pages of guidance and Director Williamson and all of her ex, with all of her expertise. She actually printed a book. She tabbed it and she did her due diligence, exceptional job. She's on the call if you have additional questions about the actual requirements. If you wanted to, if you had a question about one of these, she'll be able to tell you where it fits in the, in the, in the, in the federal, federal law. Thank you, council.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I said, uh, one question, um, analysis of the, uh, Tanyard Brook. Did you go up to bond for the Tanyard Brook and if we're, or?
I, I think I can answer.
Sure.
For, for Julie, but feel free to interrupt me. So the past few, the last days, we did get a, uh, a, a FEMA grant because we had a storm in two thousand and ten. We qualified for a grant. That covered the majority of that work. We've been waiting, um, to finish the project. So we did about two thirds of Tanyard Yard is complete. We've been waiting the last couple of years in hopes that a new grant opportunity would come up. We've applied for, uh, looked at a few grants, nothing yet. But this would be a great opportunity for once and all for all, finish Tanyard Brook and help those, uh, residents in those areas. And again, we know this fits. We're confident that this fits the intent of the recovery plan because it's going to help those people and bring those own values up. Only have that flooding issues.
Mr. Administrator, could you do say finish tenure, could you just tell everyone where, what does finish it mean, where are we talking about?
Sure, so we went from uh, pardon my time here, but years ago, they started at the outflow, which was at Walker's Cove and actually in our vicinity. It was a Garfield bathroom. And space two, which we did three years ago, approximately two, three years ago now. We went from Garfield and we terminated at Richmond Streets, we tied into the existing. Flagstone Brook there that's covered up, so this last phase, we go from Richmond Street to the State Street Reservoir.
Okay.
And part of this would be uh, you know, I think we're gonna make it a very appealing uh appearance at the uh. At 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 the headway there with the. EPWs.
Yeah.
Nice, nice, nice project, and again, it's all about managing that stormwater during these severe rain events. And again, we we have the other projects that are um. This list, a couple of them near uh Silver Creek East Branch, so that's the whole neighborhood. Up by Lillagene, up by the high school in there. Uh, we have Fox Hill Woodlawn Area, uh Collins Street, a big flooding area there, so we we would do that one. Um, we have. Uh, water quality improvements on the east side of town, um, where. Narrow road area is a big one. Um, kicking you a river, some of those outflows in also Montal Bay. Um, so you know, we 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 think, we we know that we can really get moving fast on these and spend that money and get it out into the community.
I hope you wanted some big responses for those little cars.
Don't run.
Yeah, I I just one other, this is so exciting and. I gotta say, there's also talk of that infrastructure and money, so we we, I we we were. We know that it's a chance that there could be additional funds coming from the federal government, but we have so many projects that we work on, so many that are in the queue. Um, you know, the road paving, the sidewalks, so the infrastructure. Um, funds will even be better, but we think the bulk of our drainage issues in Bristol, that is so expensive to fix. We have them covered with this um, with this.
It'll impact so many.
And it's spread out throughout town, which is less.
The the really exciting thing about it, I think, is that, you know, these are projects that we don't have to talk about when it comes to that capital budget anymore.
Yeah, just put this big.
Traded down a little bit and then we can move on to.
Very dynamic again.
Exactly. Hey, I I was wondering if maybe uh if Diane's here, maybe she can talk about that broadband plan a little bit, because to me, that seems like one of the most exciting things, I think, that's gonna benefit a lot of people that are. Tuning in over here, they'll have faster internet speeds and they'll be able to cull in a lot easier and want a better sound quality, right?
Diane, are you on the call?
I am on the call, can you hear me okay?
We we can hear you, yes.
Okay, good, so this is a very exciting initiative, this is something that the um Fire Chief has actually been um researching quite extensively. And there are several real benefits to this broadband, um. One is public health. To uh be able to, you know, disseminate information, push messages out, um. Uh, have the free public network to um. Uh, you know, com- communicate information um that. You know, so we don't have a situation where um we're not able to, um, as as the town administrator said, where we're not able to really target. Um, outreach and and get the messaging out to people when it needs to be pushed out to them. The second thing is um underserved populations. As the town administrator also said, you know, we have a population in Bristol that. Um, doesn't really always have access to the internet and. We would like to be able to give them the ability to go to public spaces and access the internet to be able to do. Um, you know, for children's homeworking or whatever else they may need um to use the internet for. Um, and then assisting businesses, this is something that. Can also dovetail with our economic recovery. Where um you you know, businesses can promote that the town has, you know, wifi, free wifi in public areas. And uh it's it's kind of a nice way to build this public network that can also help the businesses, again, who. Uh, may, you know, use this for their patrons or for their own um, you know, advertising and so forth, that they are, we are a town that is. Um, you know, virtual, if you will. Um, so there's lots of um uh benefits to this and I I am really excited, um. I think it's really gonna be something that uh. It was on our list, but it it wasn't one of those uh projects that would be in in line for funding, as you said, we have a lot of drainage. Projects that always fill up the capital plan, and so this is a a really, really good opportunity to. To bring something into town that we would not have otherwise probably gotten on the list for 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 many years, so. I'm I'm really excited that we're gonna be able to do this.
Historically futuristic.
Yes, yes.
Hey, can I ask you a a question on that, um? I understand the public spaces and I I'm not sure I'm gonna ask this correctly because I don't totally understand it all, but. I know during the pandemic, I think Cox, for example, made available hotspots in certain neighborhoods in some of our cities. So precisely for the reason for kids that didn't have um. You know, uh wifi access to be able to, you know, go to school and and so forth, you know, do virtual distance learning. Um. Is there any discussion that in some neighborhoods or in certain areas or? You know, the the fact that we have maybe some elderly, I know people that are older and fixed incomes that don't have wifi, for example. Um, because they can't really afford to do it. Is there any thought about this not having to fit, go out to the public park, but that there's, it's scattered into into neighborhoods? I don't know if there's been any research on that, I uh, like I said, I don't know much about it, except I know it happened. In like the Tucket Central Falls and maybe neighborhoods in Providence. Um, during the pandemic for specifically for the the kids to access. Get from their homes.
Right, and so I I'm just, I'm looking at the uh memorandum that the Fire Chief provided to um support the request and. I think um. It's something that we'll, we might have to map that out with the vendor. Um, I know he's looking at um. Again, public uh buildings, public spaces. And if it's something that we can bring into the neighborhood, I'm just not sure at this point, I don't know if he has. Um, gotten that level of detail yet from the vendor who might be supplying this for us. Um, so I don't know the answer to that yet, Mary.
Well, I I just raised it, I mean, I don't know if it's a good idea or a bad idea, I mean, I think the public parks and the public buildings are good, I just wanted to. Ask about that because I know that it took place and I'm not sure. How that would even go and how you, you know, how far it would go into people's homes or anything like that, so I I'm just wanting to put that out there.
That, it's a good point, and I don't know, you know, how how deep into the neighborhoods we have, um. You know, when we map out the public areas, the parks and the open spaces, we have, you know, quite a bit throughout town, so I'm just not sure how that would flow. And again, I I I think that level of detail is something that we'd work out as we move forward.
I think it's also a great point to make here that this is. Uh, what's in front of us is a grand plan and next steps would come back in front of this council as each step happens, whether it's. Um, awarded contract, uh such and so forth, right, so each one of these steps, uh, we also have uh. The, boy, am I drawing a blank on it, what is our committee that uh that looks at things over five hundred thousand dollars? Capital projects, thank you very much, so I totally drew a blank on that, so there's a be a lot of eyes. What's that, you're entitled. I'm entitled, okay. It's good to know, thank you, I'm authorized, uh, so there's, this will come back in front of us, whether it's uh, as Mary just asked about with with the uh internet or it's. The Fox Hill improvements or it's Tanyard Brook or the uh End of Brook Retrofits. These things will come back in front of us for more discussion and I think we'll continue to weigh in on on how we wanna see this happen, so. Um, I, this is excellent work, this is. Um, there's a lot of work and I should say this for all of us, the capital projects, we do a five year plan every year, we've been doing that. For about five years, this is at some, around there, right?
Or maybe ten.
But I mean, every, alright, so so we've been doing it for a while, how's that? And that is, we had no idea that any of this was gonna happen, but the idea is to make sure that we stay focused and we 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 prioritize what we know is the priority. Because we've done that, because that effort and energy is done, we're able to take advantage of this and move forward, save taxpayer dollars. And get things done that we already said we wanted to get done, so this is just, it's an opportunity, it's luck, where opportunity needs preparedness, so it's wonderful.
Could you just um elaborate a little, maybe I just wrote for a second, that one of the things that Bristol is known for.
Is sure.
Is shovel ready projects that get done on time and on budget. And that is something that, whether it, I've heard that um expressed at events. With the Director of D, from the, from the Director of uh DEM, for example, as well as Congressman Jack, I mean Senator Jack Reed. So it's a wonderful reputation to have and I no doubt that. There's a whole bunch of new shovel ready projects getting, getting um, getting prepared so that we're ready for the next event. That comes along along those, being the same thing Steve about the infrastructure bill. So, yeah, I mean, Bristol is, we're so, I don't, I hope people realize like how fortunate we are. With this, the number of grants that we're able to get because we have them. And other cities and towns actually can't spend the money, and when they can't spend the money. They'll call the federal government and state government will call and say, hey Bristol, we get this much, we got a little bit of extra money, can you use? Half a million dollars or a million dollars.
We always say yes, always use, every single other.
You 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 have a project, you know, yes, we have many projects and it will, and we can jump right into it. Because, you know, the the grand life of that money is, the shovel life is almost at the end, so. I'm very proud of all of the people who worked on all this, Diane and Julie and all of our department has and Steve and everybody. Um, because this is what really is. Really the heart of Bristol, like how hard uh you all work and. To make sure that we're ready to go and that we are able to to leverage our money the best possible way.
Will sit.
Mr. Chairman, I just have one more question.
Please.
On the um, the six point four million dollars, I I've read that it's um gonna be delivered to municipalities and to. Tranches or something like that, so is is this six point four million the first? One or is it overall for the two, as much as I would love it for.
I like the way you think.
The first one, I'm guessing that this is the two, and that's over the two years or something like that.
Yes, so it's sort of half the first year and half the year two. Or a total, it's for a total of six point four, yeah, the other thing that we, you may have heard was. The way it was, it's allotted, it's. The town gets directly two point, it was two point one or two point. Two point one and then Bristol County, which is Bristol on Barrington. Um, gets nine million and then when you split that up by per person, by population per capita. Bristol gets another four point something for a total of six point.
Six point five.
Okay, six point five, so. So so six, I'm sorry, please to be clear, six point four over two years.
So the, it would seem that our next step, unless there's this requirement, would be a a motion to approve this cor- uh coronavirus state local fiscal recovery funds. Uh, plan, how's that?
So.
Second, there's a motion made by Mary, seconded by Tony, is there a discussion?
Just just very briefly, I mean, was um much a great, thank you Bristol all, you know, for putting the time to to make this happen, certainly. This gives us a good view and a projection of how we can use the funds. Very wisely done, thank you.
Agreed.
I don't know, can we get this, but Tony, uh, Mr. Secretary, they called me early on and he said. We wanna make sure we spend this money to affect the people the most, the best that we can, so he said we have to. We're gonna consider that point when we meet, but that's what we focused on mainly.
Capture.
We make sure that we, the money gets to the residents directly somehow, and this is the best way we think that we can do it fairly. Something that all of us can benefit from. Thank you, appreciate it, thank you, but you're very right, you folks did a great job actually making sure you got the uh, so awesome, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Hi, any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council. Back to what I was saying before. The Director of Community Development, Diane Williamson, in regards to the subrecipient agreement for Prudence Island Ferry Dock.
Welcome back Diane.
Hello, thank you, uh, this is a really administrative um request that you authorized the town administrator to sign the um. Grant agreement and this grant agreement is to enable us to partner with the state of Rhode Island. And the A and R Marine uh ferry operators who run the Prudence Island Ferry. Um, as you sort of said before with the grants, we were very successful with the Prudence Island Ferry Grant and. Um, for that reason and and for others, the state has reached out to us to. Um, see if we could facilitate. Uh, and assist the A and R Marine uh company in spending a grant that they receive. For um, the riders, every year they report annual ridership. And based on that ridership, they get a a percentage of some federal money to make improvements. For their ferry service and this uh with with the grants that they have received. So far, they're going to be doing improvements on the Bristol side of their facility at the Prudence Island Ferry Dock specifically. The um, uh, town owns that dock. And so for that reason, um, along with the others that I mentioned of being, you know, trying to help facilitate the um. The ferry operators. To get these projects done, um, the state has asked us to be a partner in the grant agreement, there is no town money. Um, this is all um federal money that comes through the state. For the passenger ferry service itself. And um, A and R Marine is a small company, they're not really well versed with. Uh, some of the grant. Requirements that are necessary and since we are. Um, it's it's sort of a natural fit for us to help them, plus that benefits our. Landside um dockage for the ferry, um, for the folks who ride the ferry. So um. That's uh pretty much it, and so I I just need you to authorize the town administrator. To sign the grant agreement, the town solicitor's office has reviewed it and there were some edits made to address their. Um, their comments on it. Um, and so that's, that's it, unless you have any other questions.
Mr. Administrator. Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't catch this really, but on page ten, that it's actually the council president, just the um council president signs.
Okay, thank you, so it would be to authorize the town council president.
Back in three weeks.
Thank you, thank you, Steve.
What council's button?
That we approve. It overrides the chairman to sign on behalf of town.
And not the administrator.
You can sign on behalf of the administrator.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by.
Second.
By Tim, discussion?
Uh, just very briefly, on the uh memo, Diane, the best part that I like is there are no funds coming from the town of Bristol, the projects. I'm fully granted funded, so.
Perfect, that line. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Alright.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you Diane.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I seven, and we have Charles Cavalcanti, the Chair of the Commissioners of Cemeteries. With the review and approval of the proposed revisions to the cemetery commission rules and regulations.
Mr. Chairman, um, is the liaison to the uh, our burial uh commission. Um, I had the opportunity to speak with Charlie, I believe he may be on, is he? Yes, uh, he can speak much uh better than I about this, however, uh in speaking with him, it's about minor changes that they make and. Just to align things as we be uh and to avoid any hiccups, so uh, but uh, I think Charlie can do a much better job at uh, you know.
So I will ask Charlie, when um I did reach out to the solicitor prior to the meeting. And I asked if this felt, this felt like housekeeping, um, cleanups and edits and it sure looks that way, but Charlie, are you on the call?
Yes, I am.
Charlie, if you could state your full name and address for the record in just as uh, Councilman Tex already said, if you can just give us a quick overview.
Certainly, uh, Charles Cavalcanti, eighty eight Church Street. We have review, well, actually, the assistant uh solicitor, uh Amy Gones. Uh, what is the document edited and rewrote or polished up, the document that you have before you. The rules and regulations, a brief history. We had, we worked with the solicitor in two thousand and fourteen for um. Uh, rather comprehensive rules and regulations for the first time. And uh over the years, and recently, we thought motivated somewhat by maybe. Thought of a higher demand with COVID. That we look at the rules and regulations again, seven years later. that we look at the rules and regulations again, seven years later. Um, we compiled some issues of the past to fold them into a new document. Um, Ed Carusi uh did a final redaction that we passed off to the solicitor's office. Uh, the assistant solicitor, Amy Gomes, uh Goins, did a phenomenal job in uh coming up with the, the version that you have before us that we as the commissioner of all accepted and we placed before you to approve.
Excellent. Thank you Charlie. I should have said that, and Tony may have, but the Charlie is the Chair of the Commissioners of Cemeteries, so. Um, what's this council's pleasure?
And I come. Sorry, can I show? Do we approve uh the uh, the changes?
Second.
Motion made by Tony to approve those uh changes, seconded by Tim. Any other discussion?
And the changes seem to be clear and rules still, um, much needed improvements, looks great. It's a good job.
I agree.
Thank you very much.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you Charlie.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, the next item on the agenda is J one. And this is for the RFP nine five six, the Bristol ERP Financial Management Systems. We received four bids today. The first bid was from Ingenious Solutions Inc. in the amount of two hundred thirty-three thousand, three hundred eighty-one dollars. We received the second one from Acupunt Software in the amount of twenty-three thousand, one hundred thirty-two dollars. The third one was from Edmunds Gov Tech and this was in the amount of sixty-two thousand, two hundred and nine dollars. And the fourth one was from Tyler Technologies Inc. This one was for two hundred forty-six thousand, four hundred and thirty-four dollars within one year SaaS and service. And a three-year minimum contract total of three hundred eighty thousand, five hundred and sixty-two.
Julie, could you take a moment and share with us why there would be a over two hundred thousand and maybe just generally give us an idea of what you were expecting?
Yes, so we um are familiar with a couple of these companies and a couple of them are new to us. Um, we were aware that two of the companies had uh huge differences in their prices and uh Chris and, Chris said earlier today, it's, it's equivalent to like a Rolls Royce versus a, what'd you say Fiat or something? So it's um, you know, you have your basic software packages that get you what you need and, and are, are sort of simple and streamlined. And then you have your um, you know.
Rolls Royce.
Rolls Royce. Oh, you know, and, and sometimes in software packages that places like Boston and Providence and, you know, bit much bigger cities with much bigger functions are using. So we have, um, Chris actually developed the RFP, he did a great job on it and he set up a, a really nice scoring system. Price is only one factor. Um, but with those prices, I mean, it, it is not gonna make an impact. So uh we'll go through the scoring, we will shortlist the bids, we'll have them come in and do demonstrations. This is a big, you know, this is a big one for, for my department, for all the department heads actually, because this will allow everybody to access the financial accounting system to look at their reports of how they're doing with their budgets. They can add, they can enter their budget information so that we can see it.
And see trends, see line, right?
Yes, right, right. All kinds of data analysis capabilities. We don't wanna get more than we need just because it's a pretty package. So I, I am a big fan of keeping it simple, but I'm, I'm gonna look at them all with an open mind and all with foretaste.
Will they include uh training, one of them?
Absolutely, all of them would have to include a training. There's a big conversion piece of it. The system that we're using is antiquated to say the least. I, you know, we, we are gonna have to start from scratch in many respects.
This should see great improvement with our budget process too.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, I, Julia, we know, I mean, it's just the town, it's not the school district too.
Just the town, yep.
Because one of these companies did a big city and school department in Tucket. And I mean, it's been a multi-year, you know.
I know, I know which one puts up the. Big project, it's like an enormous project, but it's a city and it's a school district altogether. Yeah, I mean, it's everything, the payroll system and the, every grant management and every, every, everything is included. Yes, I've spoken with the finance director there about that system actually. And there's a, quite a few um of the bigger communities use it. So we'll see.
Just uh make sure that they have a good SIA or service level agreement with you. That way, you know, if anything goes bump, you can get them online. There's a lot of, you know, you get software, you buy it and then they take off and then, you know, if something goes bump, you know, you can't get anybody on the phone to help you fix it, you know, so.
Right, yes. And, and all of these companies, I mean, it, because it's such, this is, this is like sort of the life and breath of our department.
Right.
I, I will definitely be calling everybody that, you know, on the reference list and those I can find that are not on the reference list, so.
Okay.
What's this council's button?
Refer to the town administrator and the treasurer to act in best interest of the town and Chris and she, we're all involved.
A nice job, Chris.
Yeah. Second.
There is a motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim, refer to the Administrative Act as, as the interest of town, including the treasurer and Chris. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, we're done K one. Let me just move forward. I think we're at the solicitors portion of the.
So this is where we move into executive session. The motion would be to convene into executive session pursuant to our general laws forty-two, forty-six, five, A two litigation relative to Russ Russ Realty Co. versus the mayor. That would be Michelle, uh, that's what the assessor, I should say, Robin Drug Tax Appeal N R I G L forty-two, forty-six, five, A five, potential sale or lease of public property. Someone?
Second, motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to go into executive session as stated. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We will be going into executive session and come back to this meeting um to adjourn and announce anything that happens in executive session. We're staying right here. Thank you.